My name is Thomas Rassler. I'm from Falling Waters. Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
I'd like to bring you to your attention recently learned that they're going to build a 200 bay distribution warehouse on the backside of Walmart off behind Hammondsville Road. And you know traffic is already a problem there. Many accidents have occurred with light at the side of that and Hammondsville. Now we're going to have a long limited number of trucks going in and out of there, plus Walmart, plus school buses, you know, going back and forth to, you know, the elementary and middle. So we hope that you learn to address that problem with Department of Highways to correct or try to do something because you know if there's an accident on Interstate 81, that place will be total gridlock. It already is. If there is an accident up at Exit 20, there's truck trailer line right 11 all the way through there to, you know, Hammondsville area. So doing that also on Route 901, housing developments that are being built, that road back way to Hedgesville has become extremely dangerous with the number of traffic going from there because not everybody uses Route 90, you know, entrance to Interstate and the Martin'sburg. That needs also be addressed. Hopefully it will get straightened somehow to get all those curves out because the number of traffic accidents will also increase there. You have recently got a memorandum of understanding with the Board of Education. We hope that you will look into expanding the library services at our Springfield's location because there is a lot of children's activities, a lot of reading programs that go in there, and we'd like to have that expanded or library built to accommodate those services. So if you can look into some of those items for us, we definitely would appreciate it.
Thank you. And we are working with Department of Transportation as well as we can, the best we've ever had. So we're helping at all the arteries.
Well, it's going to be quite unnerving because all them trucks coming in off Interstate and 85 bays and 200 truck trailer parking spaces completely empty. It will be, you know, a total gridlock at that intersection. So hopefully, you know, they will do something to cause some kind of a, you know, service road to that area, maybe next to Walmart to do something. But I hope that we can address that as soon as possible before all the building is completed and we have to, you know, live with the consequences of not taking any action at this time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
To move.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, could you just bring one item to your attention that may impact us at the end of fiscal year? At the very bottom of page two, you'll see a payment being made to the Western Virginia State Tax Department in the amount of $20,867.69. This is actually, as you know, we are required by law to pay for the assessor's valuation system through the statewide computer system. They're actually, if you can see, this is billing for July, August, and September of 2020. So they're nine months behind when they're billing. So we can anticipate, and we've been told that they're going to get caught up this year. So we can anticipate six quarters worth of billing flowing through this current fiscal year's budget.
So, yeah, that's crazy because it actually wouldn't have been encumbered.
Correct. So we've anticipated that. We budgeted $150,000 for the current fiscal year for this expense, and I think we'll be okay and we'll keep an eye out. But I just wanted to make the council aware that they are that far behind on their billing.
All right. Any other questions or concerns about the purchase order? There is no internal budget revisions?
No, sir.
Fresh start. Everybody's got plenty of money, huh? Change in status, new hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Bill Winesky as a deputy court marshal with an annual salary of $30,844 effective July 19, 2021. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Elaine Malt County Clerk for the following: Diana Korbisky, Korbisher?
Or Viser.
Korbisher, I'm sorry, as a part-time clerk with an hourly rate of 12 hours effective July 20, 2021. And Terry Mailer as a clerk with an annual salary of $30,000 to $18,000 effective July 20, 2021. The new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess for the assessor for Kelly Del Monte as summertime help with an hourly rate of $11.50 effective July 12, 2021. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for William McKinley as a home confinement officer with an annual salary of $34,099.99 effective August 2nd, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following: Corporal Austin Enos, reduction in salary due to correction. His salary is going from $54,581 to $51,981 effective August 1st, 2021. I guess he gave us the wrong amount.
The previous sheriff, as you know, the salary scale is broken up where you go from Deputy 1 to Deputy 2 to Deputy 3, but then as you go across based on years of service, you go out this way. He was classified as, had proper classification, but the previous sheriff brought him across too far. He didn't have adequate years of service.
All right. Deputy Derek Walker is receiving an increase in salary, deputy pay, or deputy 3 pay level. His salary is going from $42,581 to $51,981 effective July 1st, 2021. And that's part of that stuff that we agreed to.
And the sheriff has, the current sheriff has, is having an audit done. We've been working with his administrative folks to make sure that everyone is properly classified where they need to be.
Change in status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for William McKinley as a home confinement officer with an annual salary of $34,099.99 effective July 1st, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following: Corporal Austin Enos, reduction in salary due to correction. His salary is going from $54,581 to $51,981 effective August 1st, 2021. I guess he gave us the wrong amount.
The previous sheriff, as you know, the salary scale is broken up where you go from Deputy 1 to Deputy 2 to Deputy 3, but then as you go across based on years of service, you go out this way. He was classified as, had proper classification, but the previous sheriff brought him across too far. He didn't have adequate years of service.
All right. Deputy Derek Walker is receiving an increase in salary, deputy pay, or deputy 3 pay level. His salary is going from $42,581 to $51,981 effective July 1st, 2021. And that's part of that stuff that we agreed to.
And the sheriff has, the current sheriff has, is having an audit done. We've been working with his administrative folks to make sure that everyone is properly classified where they need to be.
Change in status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for William McKinley as a home confinement officer with an annual salary of $34,099.99 effective July 1st, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following: Corporal Austin Enus, reduction in salary due to correction. His salary is going from $54,581 to $51,981 effective August 1st, 2021. I guess he gave us the wrong amount.
The previous sheriff, as you know, the salary scale is broken up where you go from Deputy 1 to Deputy 2 to Deputy 3, but then as you go across based on years of service, you go out this way. He was classified as, had proper classification, but the previous sheriff brought him across too far. He didn't have adequate years of service.
All right. Deputy Derek Walker is receiving an increase in salary, deputy pay, or deputy 3 pay level. His salary is going from $42,581 to $51,981 effective July 1st, 2021. And that's part of that stuff that we agreed to.
And the sheriff has, the current sheriff has, is having an audit done. We've been working with his administrative folks to make sure that everyone is properly classified where they need to be.
Change in status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for William McKinley as a home confinement officer with an annual salary of $34,099.99 effective July 1st, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following: Corporal Austin Enus, reduction in salary due to correction. His salary is going from $54,581 to $51,981 effective August 1st, 2021. I guess he gave us the wrong amount.
The previous sheriff, as you know, the salary scale is broken up where you go from Deputy 1 to Deputy 2 to Deputy 3, but then as you go across based on years of service, you go out this way. He was classified as, had proper classification, but the previous sheriff brought him across too far. He didn't have adequate years of service.
All right. Deputy Derek Walker is receiving an increase in salary, deputy pay, or deputy 3 pay level. His salary is going from $42,581 to $51,981 effective July 1st, 2021. And that's part of that stuff that we agreed to.
And the sheriff has, the current sheriff has, is having an audit done. We've been working with his administrative folks to make sure that everyone is properly classified where they need to be.
Change in status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for William McKinley as a home confinement officer with an annual salary of $34,099.99 effective July 1st, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following: Corporal Austin Enus, reduction in salary due to correction. His salary is going from $54,581 to $51,981 effective August 1st, 2021. I guess he gave us the wrong amount.
The previous sheriff, as you know, the salary scale is broken up where you go from Deputy 1 to Deputy 2 to Deputy 3, but then as you go across based on years of service, you go out this way. He was classified as, had proper classification, but the previous sheriff brought him across too far. He didn't have adequate years of service.
All right. Deputy Derek Walker is receiving an increase in salary, deputy pay, or deputy 3 pay level. His salary is going from $42,581 to $51,981 effective July 1st, 2021. And that's part of that stuff that we agreed to.
And the sheriff has, the current sheriff has, is having an audit done. We've been working with his administrative folks to make sure that everyone is properly classified where they need to be.
Change in status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for William McKinley as a home confinement officer with an annual salary of $34,099.99 effective July 1st, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following: Corporal Austin Enus, reduction in salary due to correction. His salary is going from $54,581 to $51,981 effective August 1st, 2021. I guess he gave us the wrong amount.
The previous sheriff, as you know, the salary scale is broken up where you go from Deputy 1 to Deputy 2 to Deputy 3, but then as you go across based on years of service, you go out this way. He was classified as, had proper classification, but the previous sheriff brought him across too far. He didn't have adequate years of service.
All right. Deputy Derek Walker is receiving an increase in salary, deputy pay, or deputy 3 pay level. His salary is going from $42,581 to $51,981 effective July 1st, 2021. And that's part of that stuff that we agreed to.
And the sheriff has, the current sheriff has, is having an audit done. We've been working with his administrative folks to make sure that everyone is properly classified where they need to be.
Change in status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for William McKinley as a home confinement officer with an annual salary of $34,099.99 effective July 1st, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following: Corporal Austin Enus, reduction in salary due to correction. His salary is going from $54,581 to $51,981 effective August 1st, 2021. I guess he gave us the wrong amount.
The previous sheriff, as you know, the salary scale is broken up where you go from Deputy 1 to Deputy 2 to Deputy 3, but then as you go across based on years of service, you go out this way. He was classified as, had proper classification, but the previous sheriff brought him across too far. He didn't have adequate years of service.
All right. Deputy Derek Walker is receiving an increase in salary, deputy pay, or deputy 3 pay level. His salary is going from $42,581 to $51,981 effective July 1st, 2021. And that's part of that stuff that we agreed to.
And the sheriff has, the current sheriff has, is having an audit done. We've been working with his administrative folks to make sure that everyone is properly classified where they need to be.
Change in status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for William McKinley as a home confinement officer with an annual salary of $34,099.99 effective August 2nd, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following: Corporal Austin Enus, reduction in salary due to correction. His salary is going from $54,581 to $51,981 effective August 1st, 2021. I guess he gave us the wrong amount.
The previous sheriff, as you know, the salary scale is broken up where you go from Deputy 1 to Deputy 2 to Deputy 3, but then as you go across based on years of service, you go out this way. He was classified as, had proper classification, but the previous sheriff brought him across too far. He didn't have adequate years of service.
All right. Deputy Derek Walker is receiving an increase in salary, deputy pay, or deputy 3 pay level.
Change in status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Mike Proper. He is going from part-time to full-time driver. His salary is going from $14.83 an hour to $28,945 annually effective July 19, 2021. Changes in status received from the Honorable Elaine Malt County Clerk for Donald Castleman. He is going from part-time to full-time clerk. His salary is going from $14.75 per hour to $30,218 annually effective July 19, 2021. Letter resignation received from the Day Report Center for Dylan Kiefer effective July 9, Any questions on change of status? We have approval of minutes. Let's see. Yeah, we can do them. Councilperson Delier and Mr. Davis wasn't present, so we need to approve those minutes.
Mr. President, I mean that we accept the minutes from July 1, 2021, it should be.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
I stand.
Moving on to the county council calendars, we will have our normal meeting next week on the 22nd at 9:30 a.m. here in the chambers. Boards and Commissions, there is none for tonight. We have 4 p.m. Health Board on Monday, the 19th, 4 p.m. Eastern Panel of Transit Authority, 6 p.m. Planning Commission. Tuesday, the 20th, at 9 a.m., WRNR is Councilperson Delier. 11:30 a.m., Parks and Rec, 5 p.m. Sewer District, 6 p.m. Stormwater. Wednesday, the 21st, at 6 p.m., Solid Waste Authority. Thursday, the 22nd, 5 p.m. Amblass Authority, 5 p.m. Library Board. Any changes on Boards and Commissions?
The Health Board doesn't leave until July.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's a couple things on the 19th that are, that are, need to be modified. There, on the 19th, there is a Airport Authority meeting at 6 p.m., and there's a Main Street Martinsburg meeting that I was put on recently, and that's at 5:30.
Okay. All right.
I see where there's an application for Parks and Rec.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Jones, Christopher Jones, could we get him standing?
Yes, sir.
Can you just please stop one moment?
Hi.
Sir, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, we're not off the agenda yet.
Yeah. All right, so, okay, all right, we're good. Anything else on the Boards and Commissions? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda for July 15.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Tracy, do you know that Eddie is going to do the 911 advisory? Okay, all right. All right. Mr. Hess, you're up. You got some personal property tax exoneration due to office error. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. We do, we have six we had to correct recently. The reason that's listed there, so if you total them all, we come up to $1,652.40. That's all I have.
All right. Entertained a motion on the six personal property tax exoneration due to office error.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the six personal property tax exoneration due to office error in the amount of $1,652.40.
Motion's been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day. All right. Board and Commission, Board and Beating Report, I'm sorry. Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I first want to note the passing of Taylor Perry. He was Assistant Superintendent of Schools and also member of the Berkeley-Morton County Board of Health. He was a dynamic individual and, you know, he did a lot for the county and, you know, his passing will be noted in this. Last I saw him was several years ago. I had a campaign at, meeting at the little church around Charles Street. He was there.
Hmm.
He was always a great individual, just wonderful.
Go ahead.
I had a public service water district meeting. They approved several task orders from Dewberry Engineering, Bunker Hill Water Mains, groundwater monitoring, and 5.5 rule administration. The, one item that was most interesting was discussion and possible action on request for a long service line to serve the 3M site in Jefferson County. Somebody bought the place.
Uh-huh.
And they would like to put, rent it to, I guess, a manufacturing person, people that hasn't been selected yet, but the potential 200 people employed there. And of course, they want water and sewer, and of course, the only way to get it there is from Berkeley County because Jefferson County doesn't have any facilities.
Was it ran on a private plant all them years?
Yeah.
Huh.
Of course, all that's been long abandoned.
Right.
And of course, the discussion, they had a representative from Gordon there, and they asked for consideration, and the Water Board really wasn't keen on delivering water to them.
Yeah.
Because it's in an area where water isn't really.
Abundant.
Abundant. It's in Jefferson County, and, you know, the history of manufacturing in Jefferson County has been somewhat perilous.
Right.
And so they tabled.
Put it in committee.
Yeah, talk about it next week.
Well, obviously, I'm glad they did. I mean, because the last time they were here, they were concerned about the water quantity, you know, in the future, and to expand that services outside.
That's not the only one. There is, and I forget how it's, you know.
I know Frederick County was trying to tap into some other water, and we told them they would have to pay for the upgrade to the plant.
There is a proposed subdivision east of Hospice in Jefferson County, and I guess that's ransom, 642 housing units, and they also want water and sewer from Berkeley County. That's just proposed. There hasn't been any action taken on it yet.
That's a real good strategy from Jefferson County, though.
Sure do.
Yeah, we extend into Jefferson County now. Priestfield is one.
Right.
And the area around.
That's a small community.
Yeah, the area around Hospice is another. And, yeah, you know, people who want development on that county line, low look into Berkeley County.
Priestfield borders, though.
Yeah.
That's a border.
But this one, you have to go in the Jefferson County.
Oh, yeah, then everybody on the line's going to get it.
Yeah, so there's a couple issues that they're going to have to address.
Do what I told Frederick County, you'll pay more than your portion to get the water there.
I mean, you can, anything's possible, you've just got to pay for it.
You know, I know you're going to pay, what I meant by that, you know, I know you're going to pay for the transmission line, but you're also going to pay a portion of the plant upgrade, which would then into tens of millions of dollars. Haven't heard back from them.
Have they, do they have any other capital improvements that they're doing in the near future?
Well, they're the Bunker Hill Water Plant.
I understand that, but I mean.
Well, there's several standpipes proposed or in the future, replacement and new ones.
Right.
And of course, water mains, they're going to upgrade all the Bunker Hill water mains.
That just increases pressure, right?
Oh, yeah.
And a little bit of reservoir.
Yeah. And of course, there's always the main water plant.
The main water, that's about a $40 million upgrade, right?
Oh, yeah. Well, so it's out of Berkeley.
Right, right. All right, Mr. Delier, did you have a chance to ask them about the water?
No, because they didn't show up before the meeting until we read the meeting started, and then they went into executive session afterwards. I was, I believe, so, on my mind.
So if I need to have some conversations about water availability, those types of things, what would you suggest to me? Set up a meeting with Jim or Greg?
I'd pull Greg and Jim, both in.
Right. Can we try to, can we try to do that at some point so that I could have a meeting?
Do you want them here or do you want them first together?
I would think here would be a preferred.
For the council?
Huh?
You don't want for the council?
No, but I'd like to have a meeting after council one day.
My and Jim and Greg?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think Greg had sent me a message, wanted to talk to me anyway, so I'd like to, I'd like to have an opportunity to talk about a little of the concerns with the Development Authority, that type of thing.
You want that in the next several weeks?
Soon as possible.
Mr. Delier?
I did have a, I did have a Development Authority meeting yesterday and a roundhouse meeting. The Development Authority meeting, we have several new possibilities. It seems like we continue to, continue to get a lot of interest in, in Berkeley County for, for business growth. One of the, one of the things, and I'm going to sidetrack, that I'd like to, and I said this a couple of years ago, I'd like to have part of the conversation is, you know, a bigger part of the conversation is quality of life and how to attract, how to attract people for those jobs that we continue to create. We want to make sure that our workforce has a balance with the employment that we have. But it looks like, it looks like right now we have about four really, really strong possibilities of things finalizing and happening here in Berkeley County, so that's a good thing. Continue to talk about the West Side Project, about the, about the recent purchase and what's going on over there, which is, which is obviously a good thing. The, had a small conversation about the Harold Drive Project continuing to move forward, and so, so the, I think the Development's already had a recap as well over the, over the past year that they discussed a little bit. That's probably, me may want to discuss, but it's good, it's good. The Development Authority seems to be doing a very good job. They continue to make, make good profits off of the purchase of the buildings that they're in over there, as well as being able to do upgrades and bring those buildings up to, up to a good operating standard, so. Also had a roundhouse meeting yesterday, and it appears that, although I haven't seen any letter confirming, it appears that the government made an announcement that there was a $4.5 million, or $400, $470,000, or $440, or $749,000.
I was going to say, yeah.
$749,000 grant, and they're trying to verify whether they have to come up with the 20% additional to that, or if that's the total. Kind of vague what they got from the governor.
They had to do what?
For the bridge building, to do the, to do the slab in the bridge building and finish the electrical and do the heating, I think.
Now's the time to, with the improvements on Martin Street and all that stuff, that's, now's the time to make that roundhouse rock, you know?
You know, that, that roundhouse is continuing to go in the right direction and really, really needs something like this that would give it that, that boost up over the wall, I think. There's a, I think the conversation needs to get more, more involved with the city on access into it. I think that's one of the biggest problems that that, that property has is just how you get into it.
Well, I think I said something to either Mark or Andy about, I think it was Mark, about the road that's right there at the bypass where it's how it's a one-way going out towards the north. Wonder what happens if you make a one-way going in towards the roundhouse?
So that's actually, so that's actually Queen Street. That's old Queen Street. And, and isn't that what it is? I think.
That's Queen Street address.
Right.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, that's Queen Street. And, and back years ago, back in the 80s, that used to be both ways.
Ah, so you take the parking out.
Right, right. And, and so to me, to me, I think that, I think you need to have, the cities, that's another reason why I say the city's got to be involved because why couldn't you, why couldn't you have a sign up there that dictates, you know, directional flow on that?
Get a perfect spot for a roundabout.
You could, you could change.
You can, you can go any which way on Queen Street, yeah.
Right. But you could change the flow of that. You could change the flow of that road or do two-way. You know, you could change that.
I'm sure those houses have probably an alleyway in the back of them, too.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there's an alleyway.
No? Okay.
They're not?
I think so.
Huh. I lived in one of those back in like 81, and I don't remember. It was a rental, but, but need to do something, need to do something with that area right there.
Well, aren't they getting ready to do a bunch of work on the underpass?
Yes, they are.
Need the time to do it.
1.2 or 1.4 million dollar improvement.
Faceless.
They discussed that a little bit in the, discussed that a little bit in the Roundhouse Authority as well about their agreement that the city's going to use their property as a staging area for that, so.
And be nice to do something like that right there.
Yeah.
I'm serious about the roundabout, I'm not joking.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because then that way, that gets traffic in and out of there, I mean, like that.
Yeah, you'd have to take out some, you'd have to take out some.
You'd have to put on the west side of Queen Street, probably.
Probably that car lot or something, I have to go up there.
Right.
But, you know, you're right, there's a possibility of something in there.
And it picks up that back street there, too, behind the car lot.
Yeah, I mean, there's several of those buildings in that area have burned and are boarded up and in bad shape, and if I'm not, it seems like there's, I've seen something where there was some burned buildings that were marked to be demolished or something.
I got a bed opening, I'm sorry.
Years ago, I wished a fire company, let the building burn, you know, instead of putting out the fires and then.
Eddie Dunn took over the job.
Yeah.
That's not what we're hired to do.
All right, we have a bed opening, RFP, roof replacement at 800 Emmett Roush Drive, which is the old Day Report Center. It also includes some fascias, soffit, and spouting, I believe, too, Mr. Davis.
It's the old health report.
That's way back.
Well, that's where I go.
Yeah. I was just talking about that the other day, some, another person?
Going way back?
You've got your mic.
I do.
As Council President Jacob Haver indicated, the councils where we did move the Day Report Center out of 800 Emmett Roush Drive to 520 South.
After moving the Health Department out.
After we moved the Health Department.
Who had to build a bill. Thank you very much.
That I built.
That billing has been designated for our Recovery Resources Center. However, before we do that, we, as you know, the building itself is in pretty good shape, but the roof does need some, some repair. So we decided to have the roof soffit, fascia, gutters, and downspouts removed and replaced. We have specked out 30-year architectural shingles in addition to the installation of all the product. The successful contractor will also be responsible for cleanup and removal of all debris. We thought now would be the time to do it because we have a parking lot in the, in the front and the rear building that's, that's vacant, there's no cars in it, so they could just put a rollback dumpster in there and then dump the old, dump the old debris in there.
Yeah, will improve the looks of that building.
It's not, certainly not up to the quality that this council has set for your buildings.
Hey, go.
The RFP was distributed to nine roofing contractors. It was placed on our website and social media platforms. It was advertised in the Martinsburg Journal on Thursday, June 10, 2021. We do have certification, a publication on file in your packet. We conducted a mandatory pre-bid conference on Monday. We conducted a mandatory pre-bid conference on Monday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. We had five companies in attendance. Once we got done the administrative side of the pre-bid here, all the participants were taken to eight hundred Emmett Rowse Drive and given the opportunity to inspect the building. A ladder was there so they could get up on the roof and take the appropriate measurements. Once the bid is awarded, the contractor has sixty days to complete the job. Bids were due no later than four o'clock PM on Wednesday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Five bids were received prior to the deadline, however, only four could be considered because the fifth bid did not, fifth bid or did not attend the pre-bid conference. The bids is broken out by total for shingles, soffit, fascia and gutter, downspout, also time and material for any per sheet to replace any damaged wood decking, which we don't really anticipate any, but as you know, until we build the roof, all they can do.
The roof has exceeded its time, that's for sure.
And it's been repaired. And as you look at it from Queen Street, you can tell it's been repaired.
It's an easy roof, too.
It is an easy roof.
Really easy.
Yeah, it's an easy roof. It, did you specify in the bid document a color on the roofing?
It's for us to decide once it's awarded.
Because availability right now is limited on a lot of different lines, so we may, we may want to adjust that to availability so that we can.
Yeah, the specs say the shingles, it's thirty-year architectural shingles, with color being determined by the owner.
All right. First one's Shield Roofing and Construction LLC out of South Point, Ohio. Shingles, twenty-two thousand five oh four, soffit, fascia, gutter and downspout is twelve thousand six eighty-six sixty-two. Total for shingles, soffit, fascia, gutters and downspout is thirty-five thousand one ninety-sixty-two. Price per sheet, thirty-two square feet, is a hundred dollars per sheet. Number one. The next one is, I'm gonna say HOUCK, H-O-U-C-K, Services, out of Green Castle, PA. Shingles, twenty-four thousand nine ninety-five, soffit, fascia, gutters and downspout is nine thousand fifty dollars. Total for shingles, soffit, fascia and gutters and downspout is thirty-four thousand forty-five dollars. And price per sheet is two hundred dollars.
Didn't we have a bid on that a few years ago that was under twenty grand?
Well, it wasn't the soffit, fascia, though, it was just shingles.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might have been just the shingles. Yeah, this is the first time. And the gutter was in need of replacement because we actually had a delivery within the past year and they backed up too close and they actually pretty big dent in the gutter. So we figured while we were doing the shingles, we might as well do it right. Rest of the building, next year, the building's in good shape.
All right, next one is Blackstone Roofing LLC, twelve forty-five Airport Road, Winchester, Virginia. Shingles, twenty-one thousand five hundred, soffit, fascia, gutters and downspouts, eighty-five hundred. Total for shingles, soffit, fascia, gutters and downspout is thirty thousand dollars. Price per sheet for wood decking is seventy-five dollars. That's bid number three. Bid number four, Berthex Roofing Contractors, Inc. Shingles, twenty-one thousand five oh four thirty-one, soffit, fascia and gutters and downspout, twelve thousand seventy, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Shingles, total for shingles, soffit, fascia, gutters and downspout, thirty-four thousand two eighty-one thirty-one. Price per sheet for wood decking is a hundred and fifty dollars. And they are out of Manassas, Virginia. That concludes our bid opening. And the committee will, you have a committee that.
Yes, sir. We hope to make the recommendation within the next two weeks.
What modification we have to make to the inside of the building?
None. The only modification we have to do is one of the rear, actually, I take that back too, one of the rear portables that we brought in, we put a non-load-bearing wall in the middle to separate them, we're gonna take that wall, that non-load-bearing wall out and make that into one large roof meeting room for AA and NA. Unfortunately, those two back portals do not have bathrooms, but there's bathrooms right inside the back door, so we're going to fix it so those, so it can be locked, so you can't go into the main part of the building, but those, those restrooms will still be accessible to the groups that use the portables, but that's only modifications.
Kind of like we did at the recovery resource center, I'll start.
Correct. So that, that's big enough for recovery resource employees plus our quick response team.
All right, back on the board of meeting reports, Mr. Delia?
That was all I had.
Okay. Mr. Gokanar?
Yes, sir. I met the other evening with a couple of representatives from the Moyer cabin to help facilitate the MOU, which I spoke with Anthony this morning. We were able to put a few things together. Need to get with landmarks and see what they, what their desires are and try to fit these two together to get an agreement as satisfactory to everybody. I did attend the nine-one-one advisory board meeting on Tuesday, and they got, there's a lot, lot going on there. They're starting a new call taker class in October. They're currently in that, you know, using those services right now within the center. And also, last week, Jefferson County lost a dispatcher through death, and Berkeley County sent two dispatchers to Jefferson so that they could attend the funeral, which I hope they're able to do that. Another thing is, folks at the meeting spoke about the need for a policy for large events from emergency services point of view, to make sure that police fire EMS and nine-one-one is prepared for these large events. You know, the Shawley Acres, you know, I think right now will have five different shows this year. Tomahawk Motorsports has got several large events going on.
They've had three big, big events.
Yeah, just to make sure that, that the folks in attendance there are, are protected and taken care of, you know, the best that we can be. So they didn't really give it much specifics about it, other than the fact that they felt that there needs to be a policy that when there's X amount of people influx, that they need to be able to respond to it, you know?
You mean kind of like gear up for it, or possibly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And yesterday, yesterday, the meeting with Becca Heights Fire Station Committee, that project still is on track and moving very well.
I understand, looking pretty nice.
It is. They're, they are still waiting on the roof insulation panels, which have been, they've been waiting on them for quite a while now, but project's moving on well.
What, they run short on zip, SIPS? Is that what they got? They've got the SIPS panels on them?
I don't know what.
I'm not sure.
I seen there's a section that somebody.
Is it a gable roof?
Yeah, somebody said something to me about it, and I said, well, that roof's gotta be on by now. I said, because they, they were working on that thing.
No, it's a metal roof. It'd be a metal roof, and I, I don't know about what your technology is for the insulation panels underneath of that.
Right, so what, that's, that's the same, that is, I would imagine it's the SIPS panels that we use, same thing we used on the nine-one-one building, where you have, they're, they're plywood on both sides and it's styrofoam in between, and you just attach those right to the top of the trusses. But I see where there's still a hole missing up there.
I bet.
Going good, man. Yeah, just to basically back up on the development authority, the, one of the executive committee met and basically wanted to go over the years of progress and, as Dan said, they're financially secure, as we all know, and Mr. Hicks is, gave out the financials, and then we turned back around and we talked about the growth and stuff, areas, concerns a little bit of being able to keep up with all the utilities, water, sewer, electric and things of that nature. And Mr. Lewis was talking about the electric, you know, it just, it's, it's a large demand being, being requested for electric right now in Berkeley County. And I told him, stop doing such a good job on development authority. But anyway, it was a good meeting and, and I told them about, President Harris asked about what the county was doing, what we was focusing on, so I talked to him about, we was putting a lot of effort into quality of life, you know, and brought them up to speed on, you know, what's going on in the north end with the park from, on the private side, what's going on in the south side end, on what property we just bought, talking to them about Sports of Paradise being the first water, riverfront park that we would have in Berkeley County, and all that stuff, and they were, they were awed by how much stuff we've been working on, that we, we don't, we don't need to be recognized, we're not ever asked to be recognized for any, all the stuff that we do. So they were excited about that. Other than that, that's all I have to really report on.
So one of the time, one of, and I haven't asked this question of the development authority, but we had discussed a position, additional position that was going to call, or was going to address marketing, events marketing, those type of things in Berkeley County and work on that in the development authority, and we never approved to hire that position. The thought process was that when the deputy administrator came on board, that was going to be one of the things that they worked on. Is there, was there any conversation about moving that ball forward?
There wasn't, Dan. And that's, that's, I think that's probably more important right now, especially with everything that everybody's doing, Mr. Lewis, you know, even down, downtown or Main Street, Markersburg and stuff like that, that could have started being all padded and wrapped up, you know, could, could very easily be done. They didn't talk about that, because I thought about that yesterday when they were talking about updating the, and giving the, the office complex a facelift is, you know, was too long ago, we was talking about, would we need more space? You know, so, no, I'll have to find out about that one and see where we're at. I know we had a discussion here about it, so.
Yeah, we, I think we approved, I think Mr. Davis had put together a pay scale for them.
We did pay scale, revised the order chart, and we updated all the job descriptions, including a quality of life coordinator, and that had all been approved by the development authority.
Just hadn't been approved to hire.
Just had not been, no recruitment efforts.
That's, that's, that's gonna, with your nine-one-one advisory committee, I mean, something like, like that happens and there's gonna throw a whole lot more activity, which is gonna improve the quality of life and more things to do in Berkeley County.
More events.
More events, yeah, exactly.
So, Mr. President, yesterday I attended the funeral of Mayor Johnson, and there's a great outpouring of support and respect for the mayor, and I just, it was very, very touching and a nice celebration of life. I was glad I was able to attend.
Yes, sir. The mayor was a wonderful lady and always, every time I see her, she's smiling. Smiling and very happy to be in her position. Yes, sir. She'll be sadly missed, that's for sure. Board and commission vacancies and activity. So Mr. Gokanar, if you want to talk, you talked about bringing Chris Jones in, and there's another one there, Michael Withrow?
Yes, CBD, I think, Mr. Withrow.
Yeah, it is, I'm sorry, I thought that was for the Parks and Rec, but you're, you're right.
Right.
So I want to bring them both in?
Yes.
Okay. Any activity on reappointments? Or appointments?
When does that, you have, looks like the whole criminal justice board that needs to be reappointed, when is there, when do they expire?
August first, right? End of August.
Uh-huh.
End of August.
Oh, okay, so he's got plan down.
Remember, we took, we took over day report center August first, five years ago, so the end, the end of August.
Okay.
So Eddie's got till the end of August to address it.
So they're not staggered? No.
That's, and that's by state code?
Okay.
All right. All right, done the bed opening. All right, not too far behind. Next on our agenda is Chief Deputy Tom Young, request for additional sergeant for Sheriff's Department. Good morning, sir, how you doing?
Good, how we doing?
Going well.
Just want to say thanks for the time, everybody, appreciate seeing everybody.
Yes, sir, good seeing you. And by the way, we talk to the sheriff all the time, you're doing a wonderful job.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. It's, it's exciting times.
I apologize for my rookie stabs there here, so just bear with me, you know, just a little bit, okay?
You'll get seated.
We're over here for a couple of things, we have three things on the agenda today, I believe. As you mentioned, was the request for the new sergeant position. We have currently promoted a longtime corporal who has been denied promotion simply because of his position at our drug task force, which I'm pretty sure everybody is aware that we are hot, heavy on drugs.
You are. Your ace team doing a wonderful job.
I like to think my team is feeling pretty good, too.
Yes.
Corporal Boils, who's now Sergeant Boils, has been denied promotion because of his position at task force for twelve years now. Every year, every promotion test that we've had, going back as far back as I can remember, he has scored first place, and he's always been forced to deny the promotion to keep his position at task force. With that comes some implications in that sergeants only and higher can execute certain orders issued by the court. We have been unable to do that, we've always relied upon either Markersburg or Jefferson County or Western State Police to have these orders issued, executed, the orders specifically referring to our Mullins orders. Having him as a sergeant amplifies our position within the task force. He is now capable of doing these orders as far away as New Jersey at this point. We've had, we've had interstate traffic, actually, from our task force and wiretaps that they are working on, interdicated in the state of New Jersey, that have ties to our area here, where our drug supply's coming from. The sheriff has elected to promote him. However, this has caused a shortage on our shifts, which we have now had to pull a sergeant from our evidence room who has done an outstanding job in purging and reorganizing and getting some of the stuff moved and, and getting everything much more useful within our evidence room. She has now been placed on the road to fill this gap. We are trying to, we have left that sergeant position that Corporal Boils has now taken a sergeant as a task force only position. We're asking that we could get the sergeant replaced so that I could have another road sergeant on the road and replace Sergeant Thompson in our evidence room, simply because of her training, her background, how well she's done, and her relationship with State Treasurer's Office in getting the evidence room organized, purged and whatnot. In doing so, it's going to cost us about on the high end, approximately fifty-five hundred dollars, you know, that's what fluctuates, depending on which corporal would jump up, and also it's approximately four thousand dollars to then promote a deputy to replace the corporal that we gave.
Right, right. And those funds aren't in your budget?
Correct.
Okay.
We, we did not, I should have known better myself, because I've known how well Travis has done on the sergeant's test every single time. We're doing all ourselves a disservice by not promoting him to that sergeant spot. It's holding our task force position back, and the sheriff felt, felt the right that he deserved that, as well as the people here deserve it for what he is now capable of doing as a sergeant and a position.
Okay, all right. What I would want to do, chief, is, is take that under consideration and give us a week to think about that?
Okay.
Okay, and then, because we'll have to, maybe two at the most, because we have to... to, and I don't mean this in a bad way, I mean this in a good way, we see the sheriff, the sheriff a lot, you know, and we've cooperated almost on everything, if not everything. And we just need to, to think about, I mean, because there's things that Mr. Davis and the council knows that we want to do across the board here before long.
Right.
So we gotta look at all that and see how it fits in and, and maybe, you know, maybe we can get that something there. Okay, that's all, we, we just, because I, this was, this was, I was, this was unexpected for me today, other than the read ahead.
Sure.
All right, okay.
Also, Bob Schau, who is our civil process officer. I knew Bob in my previous time in Sheriff's Office, I did not know him as a process officer at our department until I got here in January. When I look at the numbers of papers that he serves, just in the past six months, it's staggering. He single-handedly keeps our deputies on the road for what they need to be doing, more so, answering the calls, handling complaints. Just this year alone, he served over 1,500 papers in the first six months of each year. Last year, COVID year naturally, he was at 960 for the entire year. So this year, he's well on track, probably going to triple it by the time of the year over, as well as he's already returned almost 400 papers back to the corporal's county services, or almost 2,000 this year versus the first six months. The sheriff is asking to give him a pay raise because of what he does for the department and for the county. The big one to me is keeping our deputies free for what they need to be doing.
Is there any history, chief, on the years past, on how, because we had process servers always in the sheriff's department, I think at one time we had multiple process servers.
I knew we had a full-time, and I think we had a part-time.
Yeah. Is there any history about how many papers they served over a 12-month period compared to what Mr. Schau's doing, so to kind of give us an idea?
I'd have to look.
You know what I'm saying? How much money did we spend and how much did we get back?
Sure. With our transfer over to the new RMS and CAD systems, how they've all changed, and I made my terminology maybe different because I teach, make quite frequently, I don't know how far back I'm tracking.
Now, is Mr. Schau on the civilian side?
Yes, he is, and if you remember, he was part-time until this sheriff took over.
Right.
And as part of those pre fiscal year adjustments that you allow, he went from part-time to full-time earlier this calendar year, so he hasn't been full-time for a few years.
Right.
He's also assisted us for trips, he's on page right now, he's completed almost 100 trips this year.
Yeah, but you know where I'm going, that.
Well, we had, we had a conversation about this in the beginning when the new sheriff came on board, and that, that program, as far as I'm concerned, in the previous years was very unsuccessful.
Agreed.
I mean, I had, I had, I have several rental properties that my daughter manages, and we totally got away from using the sheriff's department altogether, and, and paid, you know, paid, paid bondsman to actually do the serving process because they just weren't getting done.
I have kept tabs, I don't keep tabs of the numbers, I don't have to. And I say that because I checked again this morning, I wanted to be able to say that I physically looked again this morning before I walked in and spoke to you all. There are no papers in there right this minute, he has them with him, everything else is served. The only thing that's sitting in our box is currently right this minute are set-out orders and protective orders, which he did quickly serve. It's astonishing what he's done.
And, and, and I don't mean to, to, for my statements, to, I don't think you took them the wrong way, I don't mean to doubt your word, you know, I mean, it just, we, we just.
So my, my question is, is that a, does, and I don't remember, I don't remember if we paid for that service before through, for the sheriff's department, or what was, do you know what the pay fee is?
Well, that's what.
No, it was all done by employees.
No, 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 I'm talking about, I'm saying we, I wear way too many hats, in my personal business, the personal business is paid for the sheriff's department to serve documents.
Correct.
So what's the fee?
On, it all depends on certain things, certain things have set fee, other things such as, I believe, the set-out orders, which you may be very familiar with, I think it's a percentage, not a percentage I could speak to.
Right.
And does those fees go back to the general accounting fund?
And that was my question, yeah. I mean, if there's, if, if he's doing a good job and there's fees being done, I could see that, I could see that department growing.
Sure.
And I have, I haven't had, in several years, I haven't had that conversation with the Home Builder Association, but I know that everybody I spoke to years ago had the same problem, they just quit using the sheriff's department.
And went to bail bonds.
And are paying $50, $75 to a bail bondsman to do the same thing. So if that money, I mean, if he's doing, truly doing that good a job, which I, I totally believe what you're saying, there should be funds available to compensate that.
Yeah.
But that, maybe that's something we can look into.
We'll definitely take that on advisement, too. And, and again, I'm not trying to put you off, it's just that we gotta.
No, sir, I understand.
The, the reoccurring cost.
And I don't have it on my read ahead, what was the increase that?
I was just getting ready to say, sir, he's currently at 31,512, he's requesting $3,000 pay increase to 34,512.
Okay.
That sounds pretty cheap.
Well, we'll take it out of your paycheck. We'll balance the book one way.
If you were looking to make a donation anyway.
We'll just, we'll just take the checks you don't get for a while.
I got one right here.
Okay, all right.
Ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to take up your entire time. Captain Gardner's here with me, he is in charge of animal control. This one's an easy one to me. We are looking for guidance on how to handle monetary intangible donations made to our animal control because everybody loves animals, everybody's identity, you just need to know how properly you can do that.
If I could clarify that, if it's a tangible donation, for example, we, we have gotten dog food. Dog food. When Martins, I'll use Martins as an example, if they get dog food in on a pallet and bags are broken open, they'll give us the broken bags of dog food, which we accept. Recently, we received a donation of two of the internal air conditioning units that have to be vented out through. It's, to the best of my knowledge, if they're not already installed, they'll be installed by the end of the day. There are three existing units, we found out yesterday or the day before, that they're vent, actually vented out, and someone actually closed the window behind the vent, so they weren't, they weren't perfectly venting out. So the temperature inside the kennel was, was hotter than it should have been, that should be, should be addressed, that should have been addressed by now, or will be today anyway. The, the big question is, as you know, we have a dog and kennel fund, and that fund is a, a fund that belongs to the sheriff that many times they'll use for the supplement of the regular general accounting fund, and that's from the dog tags. However, it's my understanding that there's, there's those in the community that want to make cash donations, and it has always been our policy that we don't co-mingle tax dollars.
Right.
Dog tag fees and private donations. What I would recommend to the council, and you would have to approve it, is that we set up an additional fund, similar to what we did for the David Portzener when the cemetery made a financial donation, that any, any funding that's provided outside of tax dollars or dog tags go into this fund, so that we can, so we can keep the two separate.
So would you earmark that fund for certain expenses as well?
Whatever, it would be up to the discretion of the sheriff.
Now, would that, would that be, you know, would that, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, but, I mean, typically, you know, it would be checks or credit card or something like that, right? I mean.
Not necessarily, someone could come off the street and say, here, I want to give a hundred bucks, I see you've got a kennel floor, I'm going to give you a hundred dollars cash, I mean, there's no way that we can control that.
Okay.
I'm always concerned about, you know.
Well, I think the people have.
It doesn't come up very often that try, that people want to give voluntarily, give private money to, to government. The first instance of that that we've had is with the Recovery Resources Center, and the council decided to set up the separate, this separate account. As you know, a lot of people take, you know, have soft words when it comes to animals, and they want to give monetary donation. I just don't think it's a good idea that we co-mingle.
No, and I agree.
Tax dollars or dog tag fees with private donation.
I just want to make sure that the people get a receipt or something, you know, we don't, we, everything we do gets audited, and we don't want somebody to say, hey, I gave Joe Blow a hundred dollar donation, and, you know.
Well, they might want to take off their income taxes.
Well, yeah, but is that, is it, it would just be a non, does it have nonprofit status?
I don't believe so.
Three, 501(c)(3), okay.
I wouldn't see where it would, just, just from my knowledge with the association and.
So is this something that we want to check into, to try to give them a status of 501(c)(3)?
Well, I'm not sure governments can set up a 501(c)(3).
Foundation, I think you can.
I'm not sure on that implications, I mean, whether it would be, whether state or the past, that, that, or if it would be a sheriff's obligation. I think it might be a sheriff's obligation, but I'm not.
We, just, just past experience with canine, obviously, people want to donate to us all the time. We use, or the Sheriff's Association, they donate the money to the association, association and them.
Right.
But there again, even our association's not public once a year.
Okay, all right, all right, so you're going to set up another council?
I, we will, but I, as you know, I can't do that without the council.
I understand.
Bring it back to you as per your consent agenda.
Okay, all right, so you'll do that in the consent agenda?
Take care of it.
We'll make it happen.
Thanks, sir.
All right.
And I, I passed up on one thing with regards to the sergeant position, we have consulted with the Civil Service Commission, they have given us the approval on that spot.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
One thing before you leave there, in reference to this share, to the sergeant's position, you know, to me, because your deputy has been so dedicated to his mission, he and his family have suffered because of not being able to be promoted financially, he's not being able to be promoted to get the pay raise, and that's, that's, that's troubling to me personally. So that just tells me the kind of people you got working for you, that, that they're, that their job is truly above their opportunities to grow.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that.
Thanks, sir. We are, this is a small step in, in our plan over there, because we know it's happening, it's going to get, it hasn't happened now, it will happen again, because we have a lump sum, rent structure at this point, and we, we're getting bigger, and we're branching out, we've got so many branches off, that everybody has that right to promote, but it doesn't suit the needs of the organization, and we really want to start trying to correct that. This is longstanding, I've been going on for years.
Well, chief, I could, I can say that the, the relationship that the county council and the, and the sheriff's associa, or the sheriff's department and, and the depth, the association, I think, has grown tremendously.
That's what I've seen since two thousand, sir.
And, and we appreciate what everybody's doing, and I hope they appreciate as much as we do.
I can't, I, I could be backwards, I've never seen the sheriff, sheriff's department and the county council do a lot, and that's going back to Mark.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
I'm terrible.
Yes, sir, we are, too. Thank you.
Mr. President, Elaine and I are the only two left on your agenda, I've canceled executive session, so I don't know if you want to take a break or just.
No, let's go, let's roll. Thank you, we'll go back, yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, next on our agenda is Elaine Bartison, Executive Director of the Eastern Pan, Transit Authority, update on the Eastern Pan handled Transit Authority, and I see your president is here in the room, too.
I'm here for the very last minute.
If Elaine and these other agents are given, given some kind of treat.
Yeah. I know, you know what? You, you did it a week early, I'm actually heading to New York this weekend, so I will bring you.
The thing of it is, Nikki even knows that.
One of those black and white cookies.
Well, I'm going to bring them at Croft Bakery, which was, my hometown is Georgetown, New York, which is a home of Lucille Ball, and these were her favorite cookies, so she would have them flown out, and I bring them back, and I'll, I'll bring them to you. I appreciate you having me here today and, and letting us do this update. It has, it has been a challenging year, and I know when we are here doing our budget presentation, I express that, but it just keeps flowing, you know, things are, things are tough. So let me give you the really positive things that are going on, and then we're going to hit with the hard stuff. But right now, we were just able to update our website, which was desperately needed, and I brought Benny Powell with us, and Benny is our new.
Morning, Benny.
Admin, so everybody knows Benny, right? He's a great kid, graduated Kentucky U last year, and didn't have a forever job, so he cleaned buses for us during, last summer, and then, so I got him trapped for a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he was able to redesign the website, so I do encourage you to go check it out. We gave you a few pictures of it, but it's very interactive, we're going on Google Transit, so you're going to be able to map out your trips, and we were able to work with the MPO and Benny and get that all done. So we're really excited about that, and that's launched. I don't think Google Transit's 100% off, but we are almost there, but you can still certainly go on and check that out.
Good, thank you, Benny.
The other big thing we were finalizing, and again, the MPO has partnered with us on this, is our new bus stop signs. And we've, we've had to do a little redesign on the concept because DOH kicked back some stuff on us, so now that's been resubmitted for a final approval, so we expect this one to pass. And we're going to resubmit it to all the municipalities, because they did all sign up on it, the first design, but we will go back after DOH signs off on it, make sure, but all the locations have been approved, and so we look forward to getting those board shortly, getting our ways back to sign this back up.
Good.
Yeah, so my next big thing is, last year, West Virginia Public Transit Association canceled their annual conference, which we always put employees up for recognition, and so with this year's conference being scheduled in two weeks, I am very pleased to say that I'm taking two employees with me.
Good.
I have Kim, Kim Hodgman with me, that will be mine, and she's being recognized as the West Virginia Division of Public Transit Employee of the Year today, and then my mechanic, Bill Tennants, has been recognized as Mechanic of the Year for the entire state. That was put up against all the other transit agencies.
How many transit agencies are there?
Eighteen.
Oh, really?
Didn't, didn't you get, didn't your mechanic get, a mechanic get one a couple of years ago?
He did, Mr. Dorsey, yeah, Mr. Dorsey did, and then we, and Knight, who is now my operation manager, who was Employee of the Year about five years ago.
Mike, I think it's a fifty-year growth.
Yeah.
We've had employees right now, so we've got a great group.
So I'm really, really pleased and excited, so, just for record, I may feel good haircut because he does not normally. I said, I'm putting you in the paper, please, please get a haircut.
Ah, now, come on.
You're typical mechanic, but great employees, I'm very proud of them because they were recognized through COVID, and they worked very hard when we had our route reductions and to make sure we continue to operate the leadership, so.
Man, I just, I hope you don't think us construction workers got to clean up, too.
But you know, to be able to keep that fleet on the highway, you know, with increasing miles, it has to be a challenge, and then with the changes.
And then with the changes in the automotive industry with all the electronics and all that kind of stuff. And then partnering with the county to help in their fleet maintenance. Yeah, they they're going to do that, there's no doubt.
They're they're great guys, so I'm very lucky to have the staff like that surround me. So here's our difficult thing, you know, we've been running this for over a year, we're desperate for drivers. We've lost drivers through manufacturing, we're paying them more. Amazon has taken a few of my drivers. They leave without notice because that's, Amazon wants them right away. We've struggled, we have rods that are suspended right now because I just don't have the staff to do it. So I, this is the one I want you to look at.
So do you do you, and I know you, this is a stupid question because I know that they're way understaffed too. Um, but you ever pick up drivers that would be retiring from the school board that just don't want to drive buses anymore? That type of bus anymore?
I try, I try. We interview cons, in fact, we're we're at the point where if you just show up at our door, we're going to interview you.
And I know they are severely understaffed too.
Yeah, so um, you know, some of my best drivers are that older generation because they rely on how they show up to work and um.
Kind of like semi-retired, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we do, I mean, we certainly do, but um, it's very difficult. And you know, my drivers are constantly saying, you're, I can go make money somewhere else.
Well, the liability being a driver is, I mean, not not necessarily the liability, but it is liability and the and this.
Responsibility.
The responsibility would be better idea of just being a driver that knowing that, you know, you get your 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 other people's lives are in your hands.
Well, you know, our priority is always the passenger, but it's also my employee. I need my capital equipment, you know, they have to be trained to a certain standard. I mean, that's a requirement, but I can't go around, they have to be, you know, random drug tests, they have to be pre-employed drug tests, they have to.
Sure.
Pass a background check and then, you know, using our non-emergent medical transportation, you might as well go a little bit further because they're even stricter. Because we're, you know, we're dealing with a vulnerable population, so um, just those ongoing processes, they have to be passed certified. First aid, CPR, defensive driving, and those are ongoing certifications that that we don't let lapse. Kim's in charge of that, which is why she's my employee of the year, because if if they're, if they don't hit it by their expiration date, they can't drive. That's that's our policy. They're not, you know, they have a method criteria to drive.
They're not certified.
So um, we're very strict about that, but.
Yeah, the part of the problem we have, and I've and I've actually talked to some of you about this anyway, is the 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 struggle and frustration of finding dependable workers and making sure they're showing up every day. We, you know, Elaine has created an environment there at the Transit Authority where we've got some really good employees that show up every day, reliable, you know, what they're doing. But the reality is, is that especially CDL drivers, if they're not getting out of the business altogether, they're driving for somebody else. I just left a meeting with Vice President of of Attacast or Attacu, and that's they're the largest aircraft fuel provider in the country. And our uh Jet A prices and, well, actually our Attacast too, our Jet A prices are going up. They've gone up almost a dollar over over the course of the past eight or ten months. And the reason for that is not that the gas is costing more, it's the transportation getting there. And the companies that they're hiring to to haul that fuel are saying that they're they're having to pay their drivers, in some cases, four or five dollars more an hour just to drive these these trucks to and from the facilities to bring this gas to us. And they're also having to pay sign-on bonuses and and things like that so that they're competitive. And of course, what we've seen during this pandemic, we've seen P and G and Macy's and all these, you're seeing these big signs up everywhere. Their their cost per hour has gone up, their 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 workers are making more money than they ever have. And, you know, we thought that, okay, this is just going to be a blip on the screen because of this pandemic, but the reality is this number is probably not going to be down. So you're going to see these wages continue to be high and, you know, as as a public entity, we can't afford to pay the kind of wages that some of these other folks are paying, so the reality is, you know, that that's part of our struggle. We have an environment where people like, and so we do get a lot of retirees and some other people that actually have left us and come back because they were making more money, but they didn't like where they were working. And so, you know, we we do have some drivers that way, but I have a feeling this is going to be not only an ongoing issue, it's going to get worse and worse over the course of the next few years. So we're in a place now where we're we're really struggling to get those CDL drivers in there, the passenger vehicles. We're, you know, Elaine's doing some fantastic work and we're going to continue to to plug along, but it's a it's a challenge, it's an ongoing challenge.
Yeah, yeah, I was very fortunate that I do have a relationship with the other agencies in the state and Huntington gifted us three twelve passenger vehicles so I could run those buses on the route with non-CDL drivers. Because all that that twelve passenger vehicle requires a chauffeur's license. So if I didn't have those vehicles, if they didn't partner with me to help me out, you know, they're bigger, they have, but they have an operating levy down there and they, so when they buy their vehicles, they're buying it with their county money. And um, so there's no federal money attached to them, so they can do whatever they want with them and therefore get to those those three vehicles, which was pretty amazing. And that has been how we've been able to keep a majority of our routes going because those CDL drivers are nonexistent right now.
Yeah, everything everything right now is is a struggle.
It it, I mean, it's tough and I know, and you know, I I hear it all the time. I'm not the only one in the state that feels like that, I mean, I know that, but it's just so um, I just lost a dispatcher who's um, leaning to take care of her mom because they can't get, they can't find an aide to stay with her mom. So it's just, it it just snowballs, the whole.
Well, we we know that this is one of the uh boards and commissions that actually has excelled. It used to be really, really horrible, you know, and and man, it has excelled extremely in the last eight years, seven years, something like that.
Proud of that.
Yeah, and um.
And where our ridership is diff- looks different than it used to. When I got on board, the majority of the riders were people that were primarily that, you know, people that were homeless who didn't own a car, trying to get to and from where they need to go. Majority of the riders these days are people trying to get to and from work. So at places like Peters and Macy's and some of those, we're we're able to get them to work on time. We're uh, we'd like to be a little more flexible so we can offer offer trips at times that they have shift change and things like that. We're not quite there. I'd like to think we'll get there in a day.
So naturally, I mean, ridership is probably down because of the COVID, I mean, you probably had a bad year, right?
We did.
So which reduced your revenue.
We did. Well, you know, for a majority of the year, about eighty percent of the year, we we had limited, you know, we were about fifty percent on the bus, mask mandates, you know, and when you're talking an eighteen passenger vehicle, we can only have nine people on the bus net and two's the driver. So, yeah, our ridership really got cut in half.
Uh huh.
Which is heartbreaking.
Right.
This has been the first year we saw a rider ship.
Yeah, because we're growing very consistently every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. But, you know, we're not out, people are riding, you know, it's just different, it looks different now. I mean, we are under, we're we are still under a federal mask mandate until September thirteenth. All air, rail, water, it's we fall under that, the Department of Transportation. So if you ride the bus, you have to wear a mask. And I'm very grateful because when the governor lifted those mask mandates, everyone threw their masks away. Well, guess what? We couldn't let them on the bus, so my good friend Randy Lilly came to our rescue and dropped.
Some masks off, right?
A few boxes of masks off for us, so my drivers have masks and are giving them out because um, those individ- and Homeland Security was at our facility this week doing a a run-through on some security stuff for us. And and they said, two hundred and fifty dollar fine for the passenger and your agency gets fined if you're caught.
Hmm.
So um, it's it they're they're not messing around on that, so that goes till September thirteenth. And I'm just wondering if that'll be extended.
Well, let's hope not because that 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 line will probably increase the ridership.
Yeah, 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 we do. Uh, we're, you know, we're working on, we've, it's been very difficult, but you know, folks have a good attitude, they're continuing to grow and continue to try to do the best we can to serve the many people.
So your new facility, when are you planning on that starting?
So we actually were, I was just able to oblige those funds with the feds. We we were held up a little bit because of COVID because they weren't in their offices as well, so. Um, and actually, this morning, I uploaded our DVD program and um into the federal website. So um, hopefully in the next month or two, we'll we'll head up so good, um, design and engineering your project.
Good.
So, yeah, it's been slow coming, but we're there.
Do that on RFQ?
Yeah.
Uh huh, okay.
That's one of the, with all the federal dollars that are floating around now, are you eligible to receive any Department of Transportation funds to offset your loss? Because of all the restrictions.
So our our federal appropriations are based on ridership. And I actually just emailed um our region representative and saying, what's hap- last year, they held our funding equal. But now that um, it's called the National Transit Transit Database, we have to upload our data from last fiscal year in there. My question is, are they going to hold it again?
Right, or are they going to drop us the ridership down or will they keep it?
Well, if they if they drop it because of ridership, every airline would be out of business.
Yeah, and every, well, and that's what I'm hopeful, but I still ask the question. We what we did have, um, we just did get American Rescue Plan funds, um, but that's short term.
I mean, that that keeps floating down, but long-term, we're good.
I mean, I have, I still have to meet um my local funds to have my my local match, I still have to do those. So I have to have our new local way to draw down my federal funds.
And we've been lucky that, really over the course of the life of the transit, especially since we've been delegated to small urban. It would actually have been better if we were still sort of rural because we get state dollars for that, but now we're still federal dollar. Feds require a match and the match, we have been able to get that match through uh, you know, through contracts with with the Kentucky State Department, things like that. But, you know, we, of course, we had a real waiting this past year with our first various contract. We uh, we're not able to bid on that the way you only do, we work something out, so we're able to get that. It it showed us how vulnerable we are, so if one of those drops off, we got a really big problem. We're trying to work through some of those issues now.
Uh huh.
But we're still doing well.
And you know, that means a lot, you know, you you're still smiling, you're still saying, we're doing okay, we're going, we're going to survive and that's the fight.
Yep.
Yeah.
Exactly right.
I just need those people to walk through the door and want to work.
Right.
Same here.
Exactly.
I know, I'm 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 preaching with a voice.
Um, okay. Well, thanks for the wonderful work. It's just unbelievable with how it's changed over the years.
What's the age group for your drivers?
Uh, my youngest is probably in her early thirties and she's a single mom. And my oldest is probably mid-seventies.
So if you if you had to group them, I mean, if you had to group, what's the majority, that's what I'm.
My my average.
And I'll tell you, and I'll tell you why, one of the one of the things we're missing here in Berkeley County and there's not, and we've talked about this a lot, is a fifty-five and older community. And and if I'm thinking correctly, I would think that that fifty-five and older group is probably the target of what you're looking for.
I guarantee.
Our average age, when you when you do agency-wide, is sixty-six.
Right.
Yeah.
That's your average.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So my my younger, the couple of younger ones I have in there brought the average down, so you can imagine what it was, and they're fairly new.
Right, but when we're looking at, when we're looking at new businesses in our community, you know, the management side is the same thing. They're in that fifty-five to seventy year for management mostly, so, you know, um, I I we may, you know, we may need to continue that conversation in the Development Authority to talk more about how can we help our community get those type of communities, uh, those type of housing communities located in Berkeley County to target those individuals to live in our area so that we can fill those type of jobs.
Right, well, and I think you guys are addressing some of this, it's a lot of it's part of life issue.
Oh, yeah.
If you provide that, it's okay.
Well, good.
Well, I I'm very proud of the fact that we ha- actually have a succession plan and we had it when Doug was there and, you know, and so now Amanda's in the number two spot. So when that time comes that I step down, I mean, we're going to have somebody that transitions and that see, you know, we've seen this. I mean, she's only been two years in transit, but she is hands down right now leading, she's head of the SOAR committee for the West Virginia Public Transit. So she is setting policy and writing um, all of the uh, working with the trips because the state uh, through the SOAR grant, we're we're providing state opioid response transportation throughout the state. So if somebody called us this morning and asked, well, Paul, and needs a bed, someone to go to Huntington, we'll do it. We have we have seventy-two hours to try to make that happen now with, we're down in vehicles, down in in people, so sometimes it's a struggle. But we partner with other agencies in the state and Amanda is leading it up for the entire state right now. So she is doing a crash course on public transit and all these wonderful things. So I I'm very proud of the work she's doing because no one else stepped up in state to do that and she's done that.
You you know, and I and I really, I really appreciate what you just said because we've done the same thing here in the county. Um, we've done the same thing on the Development Authority, you know. It, I think you need to, you need to look at that and you, as the director, need to make sure that that your position has that redundancy so that you can, Ken, uh, we had the conversation this morning about, you know, people moving on in in key positions and, you know, and not allowing for that other person to be there and trained. My wife worked in the private sector um, uh, for a long time and in her job, the minimum requirement was that she signed, when she signed the contract, was a thirty-day notice, you know, to leave her her position and she was a bookkeeper, you know, so.
You can't learn a whole lot in thirty days.
No, 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 but that but that's what I'm saying. I mean, to have somebody, to have somebody behind you, um, you know, a deputy or or whatever that title is.
That redundancy.
What's that?
That redundancy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, to have that, to be able.
Well, that was a, that was the idea of the board a few years ago when um Doug moved into that director's position.
I remember, I was there.
That was, that was a really smart thing to do.
Uh huh.
I think it was smart.
We do too, Elaine.
But I mean, it was a great plan and it's a good plan for us. You know, as you know, I've been with the agency since twenty thirteen now.
Yeah.
And that agency has seen a lot of transition, so.
Absolutely.
I'm breaking that mold.
So my my timeline was almost perfect, seven, eight years, right?
Yeah, so um, but we'll um, yeah, we'll continue that. To make you guys proud.
Well, that's and that's how you do, that's how you become successful because you plan, you have to look at those things down the road and and plan on how you're going to create a seamless transition and make sure that whatever it is you're doing doesn't stop, that it can continue on at the pace that it that you're doing at that time. And if you don't, then then you're failing, you're failing your employer.
Can you uh, get us some spreadsheets on your ridership of where it's been and and your revenue and your expenses?
We're hoping it's going to be done. Amanda actually just found out like her grandfather passed away and she's, so she's heading to Chicago tonight, so um, she, I'm just going to tell you. Um, but so she was um, going to get that done for Monday's board meeting, so if it doesn't get done Monday, it'll.
Just email it to us, right, email it to Penny and she'll get it just ripped out the whole, so I appreciate it, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Hey, make sure you check out the website.
Alright. Okay, next on our agenda is Allen Davis County Administrator Cole Severance on encumbered fund balance.
Yes, sir, as the council knows, it's the time of the year to declare our actual unencumbered fund balance for Cole Severance General Fund. Um, state code requires that you declare your uh, unencumbered fund balance for Cole Severance no later than July fifteenth, which is today. Um, as you know, Cole Severance is nothing more than the cash on hand that we have as of June thirtieth, less than any outstanding checks, less any encumbrances. Um, we had projected our fund balance to be two hundred thousand, Cole Severance fund balance to be two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, on June thirtieth, it actually was uh, two hundred thirty-nine thousand forty-seven dollars, which was thirty-nine thousand forty-seven dollars more than projected, recommending that um, that amount be realized and placed in account nine eighty-eight, um, which is the other buildings which we use for one-time capital expenses uh, as they occur.
How much was it, this one?
Thirty-nine thousand forty-seven dollars.
No, good job.
They're pretty close.
Alright, um, that the record shows Mr. Delie stepped out, entertain a motion.
Sure, move.
Uh, got a motion on forward.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. And you got to do as the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia and West Virginia Association of Counties.
Yes, sir, as, you know, one of the things that this council prides itself in is making sure that you're a good steward of taxpayer money. We have received dues, membership invoices from the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars, and the West Virginia Association of Counties in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars. Before we put these invoices totaling eleven thousand dollars, on your purchase order law, I know there's been some discussion with the council on the return of your investment, and wanted just to bring it to your attention and get direction on our membership renewal.
What do we get out of these?
Well...
Memberships.
Um, you're less served, I mean, you know, we hired our own person to go down to Charleston, our own group to, to, to work for us, and, and I think it's done, they've done a wonderful job. So, I'll be honest with you, that I'm one of the ones that has struggled, whether we need to be members this year, not saying that we, I think that, I think, I don't know, I, I, I just, I just, it's a, it's a lot of money. I know this year was an unusual year in Charleston, but I'm, I personally, I wouldn't be opposed to set out for a year.
Any other counties not member?
Jefferson County's not.
Jefferson County.
They're not a member of the County Commission Association, but they're a member of the Association of Counties, at least the last time I checked.
Yeah, one of the, one of the concerns that I have had for a while in trying to really look at the whole picture is, the rest of the state of West Virginia does not typically have the same problems that we have, you know, even when you look at it from a legislative point of view. So, you know, this, this lobbying organization that's supposed to be representing all counties on one particular mission, it doesn't fit, it, it doesn't fit, and there's no way that they are representing our problems correctly or efficiently as compared to the rest of the other fifty, fifty-four counties.
There's, I, I think one of the things that I, I will say, that our priority list in probably the last three years has been their priority, that's the top three items. But at the same time...
West Virginia County Commission.
Commission Association. At the same time, Eddie, just exactly what you talked about, when I brought their attention about what we were going through on the fireside, it was like, we went one of the parts of them, you know, because the rest of the counties in the state of West Virginia, they said, "We don't, we don't want to have employees to do that, nor do we have the funds to do that." Well, and I told them, I said, "I'm gonna tell you right now, you're gonna be hit with the same problem as we are, and we're leading the charge, we want you to help us out so that it will help you out in the long run." And you know, you know, you get the calls all the time about other counties wanting to do what we're doing.
Harrison County is a reason.
Yeah, you know, and, and so...
Eddie's absolutely right, I mean, I've been saying the same thing, we had the conversation with the governor, you know, we don't, we don't compete with the rest of the state of West Virginia, and so to, to be part of this, I, and I have to agree, I think that, I think that, that the money that's spent on this right now is probably better used to spend for the government relations that we hired, and, and use it towards that, because if we're going to do what's important here, we need to have that person representing us down there as opposed to the, the minimal representation that we're getting from the association.
I think the only thing I would add to that, so it sounds like the not do the membership this year, but I think the only thing I want to add to that is, if a county calls us and, or they call us and ask us for our opinion on something, I think we'd still need to assist.
We do that.
Right, regardless.
That's without question.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want, I mean, we're, we always say that we want to lead, lead West Virginia in everything that we do, so we want to be able to share that as well.
Right, well, and I'm surprised that there's not somebody that comes to present the benefits of having us to be a part of that in front of us and have that conversation.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so, Mr. Davis, this sounds like the direction is not to renew the dues for this year.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Any ideas from the public? You've been awful quiet back there. All right, Mr., you have something?
Just real quick.
Okay.
Good morning, my name is Emily Kiefer, I'm from the Journal of Health Sciences.
I'm sorry, speak up.
My name's Emily Kiefer, I'm from the Journal of Health Sciences.
Okay.
I'll be taking great space, so, thanks for having me. I just wanted to ask a third question. So, the, the organization listed at eleven by Mr. Davis, what were those?
The Cole Severance?
No.
Uh, right below that.
The West Virginia Association of County Commissioners, and the West Virginia Association.
Okay. And then one thing I missed towards the beginning, the board commission, they think it was like you mentioned, Michael Whitrow, I'm just unfamiliar with that.
Okay, so the boards and commissions, basically, we make up the membership of the boards and commissions, and so they have applied to, Chris Jones has applied to be considered for a member of the Parks and Rec, and, and then the, Mr. Whitrow has asked to be CBB. So what we'll do, we'll bring them in for an interview, and they'll tell us about their self and why they want to serve, and then we'll, we'll go about trying to appoint them to a board possibly, or we'll pass them over and go trying to look for someone else.
So a little, little more description in that is that there's a liaison, each one of us are liaisons to different boards, and so, so we go to those boards, and that's why we report on all the different boards, to be able to, to be able to give the rest of the kind of council member progress in, in how that goes, so...
So, yeah, taking temperatures all the time. All right, thank you. Welcome. All right, all right, Mr. Barnhart, if you do the honors?
Mr. President, I'm due to recess.
We are recessed.
We're leaving for vacation, Senator.